Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is August the 8th, 2005. The meeting of the Haltum City Council is hereby called to order. We'll ask you, if you will, to stand at this time for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by our city secretary, Brenda Staub.
Dear Lord, hold our troops in your loving hands. Protect them. Protect them as they protect us. Bless them and their families for the selfless acts they perform for us in our time of need. Also, Lord, we pray for the families of the Hutchison's, the George's, and the Palisca's, and we're asking for your loving hands and caring hands upon them in their time of need. Watch over and guide this body this evening in their decisions that they make for our city. I ask this in the name of Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
(inaudible)
Well, I usually begin the council meetings by saying welcome, not only to those in the studio audience, but also those who are watching either the live broadcast or delayed broadcast on HCTV, where pleased that you're interested in the business of our city and that you're taking the time to be informed and to be a part of the Democratic process. Our first item on the agenda tonight are announcements and events. Mr. Muir, you want to introduce this for us, please?
Sure. Public Information Coordinator Fran Burns is going to make a few announcements.
Thank you very much. I just have three items this evening. This Saturday, the Haltum City Beautification Board will be hosting their annual planning meeting here at City Hall in the pre-council room beginning at 8:30 a.m., and anyone that would like to have input is more than welcome to attend. Let's see. The Birdville Historical Society will hold a tour. They're going to visit the Heritage Room at TCC Northeast on Tuesday, August 16th at 7:00 p.m., and it should be an interesting visit because they're going to go over some of the history and the artifacts that they have there in the Heritage Room. They've been collecting for several years. And the last thing is Trash Bash is coming up in September, on September 17th, and this is our annual cleanup of tributaries of the Trinity River, which is, of course, a very important resource to us. It's our water resource. And in the morning, the four cities that are out here in northeast Tarrant County, part of Birdville, ourselves, and Watauga, North Richland Hills and Richland Hills, will each hold pickups at their own communities, and then at 11 o'clock, we'll hold our Waterfest, which is a sort of an environmental fair focusing on water issues, preservation and conservation. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Did you have something to add to that? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burns. We move now to the next part of the agenda. That is, we have two presentations to make tonight. The first is an update on the use of Haltum City Economic Development Corporation funds. And, Mr. Muir, if you will, introduce this and tell us how we will proceed during this time period.
We're going to have a presentation by the EDC's president, Ms. Sharon Millias. She's making her way to the podium. It's a brief PowerPoint. And I've stalled as long as I can.[290.02][290.02](laughter)
(inaudible) certainly it's my pleasure to be here tonight to give you guys an update on the EDC and some of the council members who haven't been always involved, kind of bring you up to speed on some of the things that we've done in the past, and also let you know where we're going in the future.
Tell you what, let me interrupt you. We're going to put a microphone in your hand, if you don't mind.
And while we're doing that, while our reporter is outside answering his cellphone, I won't embarrass him by asking all of us to be sure to turn our cellphone down, at least don't vibrate.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon Millias, and I'm the president of the Economic Development Corporation and a citizen member. And our other board members, I'm glad that they're all here tonight. I've got Debbie Harden. She's our vice president, and she's an our other citizen member. Mayor Calvin White, Diane Branson, Jim Sutton, and Bill Lanford. The EDC, which you'll hear mentioned a lot, is actually the Economic Development Corporation. And this is a not-for-profit corporation that was formed in conjunction with the city to administer the half-cent sales tax that the citizens elected. It was authorized under state legislation known as 4B, and the purpose of the EDC is to encourage business development in our city. In the past, certain programs that we have administered, we have had incentives. There's an enterprise zone in Haltum City, the triple freeport exemption, tax abatement. We don't administer that, but it's, we are in conjunction with the city on doing things like that. And then also the Economic Development Assistant Grant Program. In addition, we also fund projects, capital improvement projects, streets and utilities, landscape and street scape. And we also promote the city and promote Haltum City as a place for businesses to locate and also to stay through ground breakings, participation in the Quad Cities, participation in the northeast Tarrant County Chamber, support of the Moon Fest event, business appreciation dinner, informal publications, and also advertisements in different publications, Fort Worth Business Press, Fort Worth Star Telegram, and then other specific real estate type publications. These are an example of some of the corporate relocations that have been influenced by the EDC, and I think that you're probably all quite familiar with these names. And then also some past grant recipients, all Haltum City businesses. In addition, here are the examples of certain capital improvement projects that we have funded, Animal Shelter Rec Center, Street Scape, and Broadway Park. And then there are a variety of different street and utility projects that we've been responsible for funding. The Bellinap Beautification Project was a landscaping project, and we actually completed the first part of that in 2001, and it continues down Bellinap to Beach Street at the major intersections of our city. This is an overview of what the plan is to redevelop, and I believe almost everything has been completed at this point. Then, in 2002, there was a change in the law that funded, provided funding for this, and it was known as House Bill 2912. And it dramatically impacted what we were allowed to do and how we were allowed to do it. And I think at this time, Wayne Olson, the city attorney, is going to give us just a brief of the law and how it changed, and what it changed, and what it did to us as a corporation.
We talked a little bit about House Bill 2912 at the last council meeting, but this was a bill that went into effect June 19th, 2003. The Texas Legislature adopted this, and they greatly reduced the ability of economic development corporations to expend sales tax monies for economic development purposes. Came out of the clear blue. Nobody knew it was coming, but once the bill was adopted and it went into effect immediately, it limited, it handcuffed corporations from spending monies for certain economic development purposes. Prior to the adoption of this bill, we could use the sales tax money for anything that the board determined would promote economic development in the city. There were very few limitations on that, but as long as the board, you know, in its discretion, determined that this would help bring economic development to the city of Haltum City, the monies could be used for those purposes. What House Bill 2912 did was it took out several specific purposes that had been authorized in the past, and it also created a new category of purposes that it required to be met in order to expend monies. And what it did, it created this category called "primary jobs." And primary jobs are very specific jobs that the legislature determined would promote a marketing ability of firms that export goods to regional, statewide, national, or international markets. And unfortunately, the definition of primary jobs is so limited in what it allows that it has cut back on what we can use funds for. Just to give you an example, primary jobs must be in one of the following industries. They must involve crop production, animal production, forestry and logging, commercial fishing, support activities for agricultural and forestry, mining, utilities, manufacturing, wholesale trade, transportation and warehousing, information securities, commodity contracts, jobs of that nature. And therefore, it's very specific, very limited in the types of jobs that have to be influenced by the use of these monies. Probably the majority of funding that is now allowed in the statute has to be devoted to encouraging or promoting primary jobs. What we still can do under the Act after House Bill 2912 are some sports-type or park or recreation-type venues that are authorized by the Act, even though they're not found by the board to create primary jobs. And so if it's not related to the creation of a primary job, what House Bill 2912 still authorizes the board to do is to approve projects that promote tourism, convention, entertainment, sports facilities, parks, and related store, restaurant concession, and automobile parking, related transportation facilities, related roads, streets, and water and sewer facilities, and other related improvements that enhance any of those items. So, in a nutshell, what the board is allowed to do now is to fund projects that are related to the tourist convention or recreational type of activities, or to fund mostly infrastructure improvements that are designed to bring those types of activities or primary job activities to town. And that is a very brief overview of what 2912 did. There's a lot of very convoluted language in the statute that we have to deal with on a daily basis, but that gives you a feel for the change that the legislature made two years ago and what the Economic Development Corporation has to deal with today.
Thanks, Wayne. Just to, I think Wayne did say that, but it really changed dramatically the type of things that we had to look at, the type of projects we could be involved in, and what our actual contribution could be to those projects because the way that the law changed. This slide just shows a basic overview of the past few fiscal years and what are the actual sales tax revenues were coming in through the creation of the Economic Development Corporation, where the money came from, and then an overview of where the money actually went. You can see the impact that it had based on what we could and could not fund after the law changed. It's very apparent. But also to point out that during 2000, fiscal year 2002, there was a large citywide project involving resurfacing of streets and reconstruction of streets, and that's why that number is so high for those years. Other things to point out of note is the debt service number that did increase incrementally from fiscal year '01 to fiscal year '03, '04, and that, of course, was caused by issuance of new bonds to be able to fund certain capital improvements that I illustrated in one of the earlier slides. Also to point out that the years when the revenues, when the expenditures were less than the revenues, those monies are still there, and they are sitting securely in the fund. So, it's just, we just happened to have a surplus for that year. The money's not been spent nor designated, and that's where we came up with our figure to base our, this coming year's budget on. With the changes in 2912, we still have certain future economic development initiatives that we are actively working on as a board. One large one is the Little Fossil Creek Flood Zone Relief Project. This project has been in planning stage for many years, and kind of the focus continues to change, but we are involved in the planning process for this, and we'll be involved in the funding of certain aspects of this. Interstate 820, we are involved currently in a feasibility study for the corridor and the impact that the widening and the changing of the off-ramps and on-ramps will have on our city. And in 2003, we were active in the opening of the frontage road that will be a part of this master plan once improvements to 820 are made. Another project that we're involved in is the Cotton Belt Corridor, and we recently obtained a quiet zone grant to impact the railroad crossings. And then we are also involved in another study that is known as the Cotton Belt Corridor Study to study public transportation, specifically light rail commuter-type transportation that will end up going through our city. Certain promotional programs that we are involved in. Quad Cities DFW, I alluded to this earlier, and this is just an alliance that four cities formed in two school districts to market this area as a group instead of just one city or one group going out to solicit people to relocate to this area. We do this as a group, and we have started to see some real success from our efforts in this organization. We're also active members of the northeast Tarrant Chamber of Commerce, and we participate in many, many different segments of the chamber, including the luncheons and the round tables and different things, just to continue to promote the city, promote the city as a place to do business, and promote our businesses within our city. We also publish informational ads and brochures, and these are just some examples of some of the ads that we've done. The Fast Facts is a brochure publication that we've done, and we have that available. And then the Shop Haltum City brochure, this is a restaurant and retail guide, and it's just recently been updated to list all of the retail businesses in Haltum City. In addition, we are just about complete with an interactive mapping system on the EDC webpage that will give you a map of the vacant building and land inventories. So, for a real estate developer or a retail business that is thinking about locating in Haltum City or expanding their business, they will have access to what's actually available. And it will provide the information on the property as well as the zoning, the utilities, and aerial views of the property so they can find out what the actual access is. We have a newsletter that's the Haltum City Crossroads, and that does come out, and you can also access that via the website. And on the website, we strive to keep that updated to give information about the EDC and then recent developments in the city. This just shows you the crossroads, and I think everyone's probably seen this publication. And it comes out biannually and explains current business and things that are coming, developments. This gives you an illustration of our sales tax revenue and the increase in the sales tax collection from 2002 to 2003. This is all sales tax. This is not just economic development sales tax. And then this is just a sign of some of the new development that we're seeing in our city. So, no, I believe that the efforts of our board, even though they have been restricted, can still be measured and still see exactly what pays from our efforts. So, I guess if council has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Members of the council, any questions for Ms. Millias? I don't believe there are any. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate, I appreciate your presentation. The Economic Development Corporation is a very important part of the city, and we are, we're thankful for the leadership of Ms. Millias and others who are involved in that. Do we need to take just a minute, Susan, to, are you, okay. Tom, did you need to say anything while we're in transition regarding this item?
Not particularly. I know one of the things that Susan and I have been talking about, and we haven't really briefed the board on, but we're looking at, possibly doing some radio spots, trying to promote the city from a business standpoint as a place to do business and to come to. So, that'll be, as those things continue, we'll hopefully be bringing something here very shortly, certainly to the board for their consideration. But they're trying to find some different ways to get the word out about us.
Okay. As you can see, some good things are happening in Haltum City, and we want to see that continue. Councilmember Lanford, you had your light on. I don't know if it, you turned it off or if the light blinked over here.
Yeah, I was going to say something about the, I don't think it was mentioned in Wayne's presentation, that subsequent, or before the 2002 changes from House Bill 2912, we had some things started by the EDC that are grandfathered so that we can continue those activities legally, and they're not impacted by 2912. Is that?
The statute thankfully did specifically say that any project that had been approved or undertaken prior to June 19th could be continued.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure that everybody knew that.
Okay. I don't know if I, I don't believe I stated at the beginning of the meeting, if any of the citizens wish to speak on any of the items on the agenda, you need to fill out one of the yellow cards and speakers' request forms. It looks like this, and they're located out the door just out back. Except item eight and nine, those are public hearings, and everybody will be able to address the council at that time without having to fill one of those out. So, if we can, let's go ahead and move now to the second presentation, an update on the gas drilling on city-owned property. I had requested this item be placed on the agenda because I felt with all that's going on and that we see in the media and read in the media about what's going on in other cities, and there's some pretty big numbers being thrown around as far as potential for revenue, I thought it would be good for the citizens of Haltum City to be aware of where we are, where we're headed in regard to the drilling of gas wells on city-owned property. There are three ways the city receives revenue when gas wells are drilled. First of all, there's a signing bonus. Secondly, there are royalties. And then there is increase in tax revenue as a result of an increase in property value when those mineral rights are factored into what a piece of property is worth. In Haltum City, we do not have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem, and I think that's very obvious when you look at the expenditures we make per capita in operating our city compared with the other cities round about us. And cash, the revenue to fund what we need to be doing in our city, is always a challenge for us, and here is a way for us to tap into an additional revenue source in order to fund some of the things we need to be doing as we provide service to our citizens and as we compete with the, with our neighboring cities for businesses and other types of things. So, Mr. Muir, our city manager, I think, is ready to give us an update on the gas drilling on city-owned property. So, Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This will be a brief update. There's really only one property that the city has that is conceivable for drilling at this time, and it's down off Minus. It's actually where the transfer station is, 2100 Minus. We have about 15 acres there, and I've got a bid packet ready to go out. I was ready to do that after meeting with an attorney this past week. Think I need to go ahead and bring in the oil and gas attorney up front instead of doing it a little bit later to help with the negotiations. So, I need to discuss with him the bid packet and what we're going to be putting in there. But I have every intention to come back at the next council meeting with an item for the council to consider permission to bid for drilling on that site. But until then, now that the, I won't say the budget's finished, but most of the hard work, just spending a lot of my time with the budget and some of the other things going with it, I'm able to deal with this a little bit more. This has been something that's been on my plate for I don't know how long. It's long overdue and coming. I don't think we've missed anything in looking at the market and seeing what a lot of other communities doing. I think we'll be just fine, but we do need to do it. We don't, I cannot waste any more time on this, so I need to get after it, and hopefully at the next council meeting, you'll have an item to grant authority to do that.
Okay. One question I want to ask in regard to this, and members of the council, you may have some questions also for Mr. Muir, and that has to do with, I know as we read articles in the paper, we have a number of cities around us that are drilling, are getting ready to.
Right.
And we're setting, along with these other cities, right on top of the Barnett Shale. If a neighbor drills a horizontal well, does that tap into the potential for lost revenue for the city of Haltum City if they jump in there and get in first? Or do we receive, as far as the royalties are concerned, and the increase in tax revenue from the property being increased value when the mineral rights are taken into consideration? Do we lose any revenue that way? I don't want us to come up short on anything.
Right. It could. It could happen. I don't feel it's, we're in that danger part yet, but if it continued in action, could put us in a very contrary position for that. Yes.
Okay. Well, I want to go on record as saying, if we end up receiving less revenue on that oil and, or on the gas drilling than what we are entitled to, I'm going to be pretty upset.
I understand.
So, we have to go ahead, and I'm glad you are stepping in, and by the next council meeting, we'll have something for the council to take action on.
That's my goal. That's my goal. Have it there.
Members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Muir, questions for the attorney, or anyone else? Okay. All right. I believe everybody who has had an opportunity to speak on this subject, so we'll move on to the next item, and that is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory, and it will be enacted. Councilmember Branson, your light, okay.[1655.88][1655.88](laughter) Pre-council, this lady's tough. She turns her light on ahead of time, so I'll be sure to notice.
Two and a half years, but I'm on.
Okay. That's fine. I thought you had something that we needed to say on the other subject before I went forward. Okay. At the appropriate time, we'll call on Councilmember Branson. But what we have here is the consent agenda, and this is considered to be self-explanatory, and it will be enacted by the council with one motion. An approval by the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each of these items in accordance with the staff or board recommendations. We are, this consists of items one through nine, if you're following along on your agenda. We are pulling item number four, consideration and action regarding awarding a bank depository service contract with, to Frost Bank. So, at this time, Councilmember Branson, I'm ready for a motion regarding approval of consent agenda with the exclusion of item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of item number four is presented.
Councilmember Lanford, I believe your light was on next.
Yeah. I just want to point out that it's items one through seven minus four, not one through nine.
You are correct. So, let the record reflect, it is items one through seven.
Minus four.
Minus four.
And I will, if, is that, okay. And then I would second that.
Thanks for pointing that out. I'm trying to get us moving on through the agenda tonight, but yes, items eight and nine are public hearings, and those will be addressed at the appropriate time. Councilmember Sutton, you had your light.
That was, that was my comment.
Okay. So, what we're doing now is taking action to, on the motion to approve items one through seven with the exclusion of item number four. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, if you will, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. Okay. Now, let's go back to item number four. Item number four is to give consideration and our action regarding awarding a bank depository service contract to- depository service contract to Frost Bank, and we've had some citizen questions about this, and we thought it would be good to have some public discussion regarding that matter. Joel Welch, our financial guru, our Director of Finance, is about to talk to us about this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a five-year contract with Wells Fargo that is expiring at the end of this month, and so we went out for requests for application. The local government code, Chapter 105, controls this, and it's, in essence, it works like a bid, but they call it a request for application. And so we advertised in the paper two consecutive weeks in compliance with the law. We sent applications to six financial institutions who had either expressed interest in the past or were located within the city. We received three proposals, one from Wells Fargo, one from Frost Bank, and one from J.P. Morgan Chase. The staff reviewed the proposals, and we found that all three respondents were capable of providing service. One of the respondents, Frost Bank, was the apparent low proposer, or the apparent low applicant would be the correct word in this case. We, again, we checked their capability of serving to meet our needs. We checked their references. We verified the numbers with them, and at this point, we have been able to determine that at a monthly cost of $927 per month, that Frost Bank is the lowest responsible bidder. In comparison with the current cost, our current contract with Wells Fargo has been costing us about $3,600 a month, or $43,000 a year. When Wells Fargo submitted an application, through this process, they lowered their fee from $3,600 a month to about $1,800 a month. The closest applicant to Frost Bank was J.P. Morgan Chase, at right out, $1,100 per month. So after reviewing the references, checking their qualifications, and verifying all of the numbers and everything, we found that Frost Bank was providing the lowest responsible bid. I'll also mention that Mr. Hadley Warner with Frost Bank is also present with us. He's in the room and will also be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes, yes, sir. On our current annual expenditures compared to our proposed annual expenditures, would that how much would the savings annually?
We are estimating, based upon the proposals, the savings will be about $35,000 annually.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. There was some discussion in pre-council, and since we had emails and discussion amongst citizens, Tom or Joel, would you all address what constitutes a hometown bank versus other banks? Was that, did you call it home?
Local.
Local bank, I'm sorry. It's local bank versus, since there's been some discussion that Frost Bank doesn't actually sit in Holtham City, and then maybe address the fact that we have two or three banks total in Holtham City. We, just for those that didn't have the benefit of the pre-council conversation.
State law states that a city in considering a bid can consider a local vendor, give a 3% local preference to vendors. And the state law also defines a local vendor as having a principal office in, within that municipality, of which Wells Fargo, while they have two offices here, they can't be considered principal offices. It's a multinational corporation. So just because they are here, and by law, they do not, they are not classified as a local vendor. The number of banks that are in this community, I think Joel can address that question a little bit better as far, I think he and his staff have done.
We have, we had identified three local banks in the community, with the Northwest over here on Denton Highway, a presence of Wells Fargo, and then a branch of another bank that I want to think either is or was SunTrust or something like that, that is over on Beach, just across, just north of 820.
South Trust.
South Trust, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Mayor. And we did, we approached all three of the financial institutions in town and asked them to submit applications, and Wells Fargo was the only one that submitted an application.
So actually, based off what Tom says, we don't have a local bank by the definition that the state of Texas has.
Well, we do, but they chose not to apply. We did invite them, the Northwest.
Northwest, I would consider that.
They would be considered a local by the statute, but they are.
So those that chose to apply were not local banks by definition.
Right. Now, South Trust is a huge corporation also, but they would not be considered a local bank, neither.
And then another question brought up by citizens was the ability of our employees and vendors, we write checks to, to cash checks, and we were assured in pre-council that that wasn't an issue with going through a Frost Bank to cash a check there without a charge, drawn on the Frost Bank account.
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. Those, I just wanted, for those, in case the persons or the individuals that sent the emails were watching, they could have their questions answered. Thanks.
Councilmember Sutton?
Thanks, Mayor. I did a little research on the web and found out that Wells Fargo has our corporate headquarters in San Francisco, California. Wells Fargo, I mean Frost Bank has their corporate headquarters here in Texas, I believe. Is that correct?
San Antonio.
San Antonio, Texas. So in a sense, we're dealing with a Texas company now if we make this change, rather than a California company. I'd like to ask, is there a possibility that you might be looking into opening up a branch bank in Holtham City?
If you would, go ahead and come to the microphone, and for the benefit of our citizens here who don't know you, and those who are watching on TV, give us not only your name, but your company and your position with the company, please.
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm Hadley Warner, Senior Vice President in the Public Finance Division for Frost Bank, and we are domiciled in San Antonio, Texas, as far as our corporate headquarters. We are at Texas Bank. We are only in Texas, and as you've probably seen our commercials on television, we're from here. We have a strong presence here in the Metroplex. In Tarrant County, we have approximately 17 branches that we've acquired and put in over the last few years. We are always looking for opportunities to expand our branch network. We are a growing company, and we address those opportunities as they present themselves in markets where those opportunities pop up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lucky to consider.
While Mr. Warner is at the podium, any other member of the council have a question or comment for him? I believe they're not. Thank you, Mr. Warner.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity.
Any other, Tom, do you have anything to add? Any, anyone else? Okay, I want our citizens to understand, yes, Councilmember Hutchinson?
No, I just thought you had something else.
Okay. Hold that thought.
I do like Ms. Branson.
We have people chomping at the bits to make motions tonight. That's good. That's good. I appreciate that. We move council meetings through quickly when we do that. To summarize, what is at issue here is the city is required to have a designated depository bank, and we have had this current contract for one year, two years?
We've concluded five years on this current contract. That is as far as we can go.
So we have five years in this contract, and the cost to the city is $3,600 a month. Well, when they came back to bid this time, they said, "We'll cut that in half, and we'll make a bid of $1,800." Well, that's interesting, that they would provide the same service for half what they'd been charging. And then we had two other bidders come in, the lower bidder being Frost, to say, "We'll do what, we'll do this same job for $927 a month." So there's a pretty big gap. That's $11,000 a year for what we'd been paying $43,000 a year for. So we believe this is responsible stewardship to make, to take action on this, and to give consideration to moving the depository from one bank to the other when you've got that many dollars involved in the process. So having said that, if there are no other comments, Councilmember Hutchinson, we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that having been said, and with all due respect to Ms. Branson, I want to make a motion that we approve the bid, award B-2005-117 to Frost Bank.
Okay, and I want to tell the rest of y'all, Councilmember Reese has picked up on what's going on down here on turning lights on quickly, because just as soon as I opened my mouth to say something about ready for motion, her light came on before Sutton and Holcomb. So gentlemen, you're too slow on the draw. Councilmember Reese.
That's for a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item number four, and that is to award the bank depository services contract to Frost Bank at a rate of $927 a month. Any discussion on the motion? If you will, register your vote, and that passes, Madam Secretary, by unanimous vote of the council. Okay, now we move to item number eight, which is, item number eight and nine both are public hearings. The first, a public hearing on the Crime Control and Prevention District Budget. Mr. Muir, are you gonna present that to us?
Okay. Yeah, well, I thought Joel was, and he disappeared, so he's back. Joel, why don't you go ahead and take us through the CCPD?
Thank you, Mr. Muir. I had to go get my notes. The crime district, of course, is funded by a quarter cent sales tax, and this sales tax generates about a, almost a million dollars a year to be used for specified crime prevention and law enforcement purposes. We, we're going to be bringing a budget tonight that would show revenues of $999,000, expenditures of $1,111,000, and an ending fund balance of about $170,000. At the workshop on Saturday, the council author, or directed the staff to make some changes to this budget. What that did is that caused the adoption process to develop a bit of a kink, and the law does anticipate this type of situation, and basically what it allows the council to do is it allows the council to approve the budget or deny the budget. If there is a change that needs to be made to the budget, such as this one, we have to deny the budget and then schedule a joint meeting between the council and the crime district. And so what the staff is recommending at this point, and I've never done anything like this in my 25 years in this business, is I'm asking, I'm gonna be asking the council to go ahead, conduct the public hearing for any input on the budget, and then at the conclusion of the public hearing, to deny the budget.
Okay, and once we do that, will you explain the procedure from that point? You mentioned that the Crime Control District Committee, Board Commission will meet with the council, and then what happens at the next council meeting and the one after that is far as, since we, you're recommending we deny it tonight, how do we approve it from that?
Well, once the combined meeting of the Crime District Board and the City Council occurs, as long as the two can come to an agreement on the necessary corrections that need to be made to the crime district, they can then approve it and move on in the budget process, and the next hearing on the crime district budget will in fact be the council's hearing of the entire budget on the 29th. We are, the staff is recommending the joint meeting be conducted on the 22nd of this month, and then as I mentioned, at that point, we'll be able to move forward and just include the crime district in the regular budget hearing on the 29th, and we'll be right back on track.
Okay. Tom, did you have anything you want to add to that? Members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Welch? Okay. This is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing at this time on the Crime Control and Prevention District Budget. And members of the audience are certainly welcome to make comments or ask questions regarding this. However, remember what Mr. Welch has just stated to us, that the recommendation is that we deny this tonight. If you do have comments or questions, you're certainly welcome to make them tonight. At the next council meeting on the 22nd, this item will be on the agenda again, and if we could, we need, make that a public hearing as well, to give our citizens an opportunity once we've, we're kind of back on track with that. Okay, the reason this was necessary, and I want to be sure everybody understands that, it's just a procedural matter. On Saturday, we became aware of an opportunity to move some accounting money around in the budget, but that was after the fact that, of the Crime Control and Prevention District Board meeting and approving the budget, so we're gonna have to go back and get that squared away before the council can take action. So after having said all of that, I hope I haven't confused anyone, but if we have any member of the audience who wishes to speak either for or against, or to ask any question, or make any comment about the Crime Control and Prevention District Budget, you have an opportunity to do that now.
Bob Watkins, 6140 Blues Brew Circle. Just for the record, and so that the people in here and in the TV audience would know this, would you, would someone state the members, who the members of this crime district board are?
It is the council.
The entire council?
The eight members of the entire council, yes.
I understand that the state law says it's either the council or the citizens, right?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council during this public hearing? Okay, they're being done. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and that's incredible. I've been here nearly five years, and I've always been able to see one light come on and the next, and I mean, within one tenth of a second, five, just boom. Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I was first. I make a motion, we deny the budget for the CCPD.
Okay, and Councilmember Holcomb?
Thank you, Mayor. That's for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Calvin, just to make a quick comment, that what this accounting adjustment that is being talked about is, is in regards to allocating the retirement from the general fund budget into the CCPD budget in a general sense, correct?
It's not the retirement, it's the risk management. It's the, it's the risk.
Property casualty, general liability, emissions insurance.
It's the risk exposure amongst all the funds that has been currently shouldered by the entire general fund. It is now being proportioned out to the other operating funds.
Operating funds, right. Okay, good.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, if you will, register your vote. I will display it at this time. Okay, not quite as quick on the lights for voting as we are on wanting to make the motion. Okay, don't know what that says, but.
Excuse me, the, Mr. Welch reminded me that in the motion, I guess we need to have another motion as far as calling for the joint meeting of the council and the CCPD.
Just announcing that is sufficient. I understand that.
That suffices for law?
Yes. For the purposes of the joint meeting of the Crime Control and Prevention District Board and the City Council, there's no specific requirement that you announce the date and time. We'll get to that.
It doesn't have to be part of the motion or anything?
It does not need to be, but I understand we're gonna hold that joint meeting on August 22nd at 7:00 in these council chambers.
Thank you.
That's what I needed, right there. It was just somebody to announce that when we.
Councilmember Holcomb, you have a question regarding that, or comment?
Yes, sir, just a quick question. Just trying to get it straight with the quorums for this meeting, that could get kind of tricky. Is it now down to just like, Bill and I would be a quorum, because that would be equal to four people? Is that right?
Don't go there.
I don't, I'm not following you, sir.
I don't think there's a full moon out, but we've got some council members acting like there may be one tonight. Okay, let's move on to action. Action item number nine, a final plat, our planning director. a final plat, our planning director, Mr. James Plisca.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the 11th plat of '05, and it is a replat of residential property, therefore the need for a public hearing. And also 26 200-foot notices were sent out for this. It is consideration and our action regarding the public hearing of Mr. Matt McCurdy. He's of Polo Homes. For the final plat of lots 14GR, 14HR, 14IR, JR, and KR of Block 14 of the MC Smith subdivision, being a replat of the south half of the west half of Lot 14 in the SF2 residential district, located at the northeast corner of Earl Drive and Joy Lee Street, it contains approximately 1.1503 acres of land, locally known as 3,500 Earl Drive. The applicants filed a platting the property in order to create five residential lots for a new development. These will do, these will be residential structures that he said in the 110 to 120 range. The property also needs to come into compliance with the city subdivision ordinance, and it is the amendment to the city subdivision ordinance that's allowing us now to plat portions of a lot. As I stated previously, the site is located in the northeast corner of Earl Drive and Joy Lee. Joy Lee, as you may remember, was reconstructed several years ago, and that's why the developers were looking at this piece. It's a new street in front of the properties. Of course, we contacted, we contacted all the utility companies. Those include Encore Electric, Atmos Gas, and Charter Communications, and they've all responded to the city's requests. This is necessary for this redevelopment of five lots, and the existing utilities are fine for this development. And of course, access to the property will be from both Joy Lee and Earl Street, or Earl Drive. The plat was recommended for approval to the City Council by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of July 26, 2005, and that was unanimous vote.
Members of the council, do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Plisca before I open the public hearing? Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. James, can you explain why the property line does not parallel the street, and is there a reason for that, or pre-existing, or?
Yes, sir. During the construction of Joy Lee, there was some taking of right-of-way, again, prior to this plat. So it's an existing street there, so this plat indicates the existing conditions located there.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for Mr. Plisca? Okay, there being none, I'll open the public hearing at this time to give members of the audience an opportunity to speak either for or against this request for a final plat of that property. Do we have anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing, and I am ready now for a motion to address the, this item. Councilmember Reese?
I move to approve final plat P-011-05.
Councilmember Sutton?
That's for a second.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Okay. That was just for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve the final plat? If you will, register your vote. And it passes by unanimous vote of the council. We come now to item number 10, and this is to address the property tax rate, to take a record vote on the preliminary rate for '05-'06, and to schedule public hearings on the tax increases. Mr. Welch, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welch is going to be available if I need him, but I'm going to take this. The council, the staff is, and the council have been working diligently on the proposed budget for the FY 2005-2006 fiscal year. The budget that's been presented, that's been worked on during the workshops, is currently predicated on a tax rate of .5576 cents. That is, what this item will be doing is establishing a preliminary tax rate of .5576 for $100 valuation. That is a .01587 dollar increase, or 1.587 cent, depending on where you want to put the decimal point, but it's about a penny and a half increase over the current rate. In that budget, we're able to accomplish many things. We're going to be adding staff, as we've been explained, we're going to be adding an assistant city manager, adding a police lieutenant, a police sergeant, a police officer, two firefighters, a code enforcement officer, a municipal collections, a municipal court collection specialist. In addition, we're going to be doing a debt issuance to get needed capital for vehicles and equipment. We're also going to be shifting our pay plan, the non-sworn and the sworn. Specifically with the sworn, we're going to be, there's a little over 300 grand in there to shift that pay plan to market, to adjust to market basis. It's not, it's shifting it towards the market, it's still not getting it all the way there, but more importantly, it's correcting some deficiencies that we've got with the charter and our current rules and regulations. In some areas, we are in non-compliance there as far as how we treat a few of the positions there. Not that we're violating anything right now, but we are in a non-compliance mode in a couple of issues, and so we need to correct that. And that's what this pay plan does. This budget achieves a lot, but what we're asking you to do tonight is to take a record vote on the tax rate, on the preliminary tax rate. Preliminary tax rate again is .5576. By setting this rate, this is not set the rate, this is setting the rate to where it cannot go up from that. You can lower the rate. The rate can come down in the later public hearings on the tax rates that you're going to be having on August 22nd and 29th, and when you take final action on adopting a tax rate and a budget on September 12th, the council can lower the rate. It cannot raise the rate. But again, this is the preliminary tax rate, this is not the final one. Without, I'll take any questions from the council on this item.
Everybody understand what Thomas said, and is ready to move forward? Okay, having said that, I am ready for a motion regarding taking a record vote on setting the preliminary tax rate for 2005-2006.
Mayor, point of information, is this not a public hearing?
This is not a public hearing.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Public hearings will be on, stated in the agenda item, the public hearings will be taking place on August 22nd and 29th.
Okay, so at this time, I'm in line for a motion to take a record vote by members of the council on setting the preliminary tax rate for '05-'06, and for scheduling of the public hearings on the tax increase. And the first one with the light on is Councilmember Reese, followed by Councilmember Hutchinson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to approve the preliminary tax increase, and I'd like to make one statement. It was a question I did ask earlier in pre-council, that I'm asking her to get me some figures as to the revenue that we'll save due to being able to keep our tenured police, fire, city employees, because we won't have to double up on a training issue and on the class issue. And just a point of information, if, when we put the two fire back in place, we'll be back to staffing where we were three years ago when they started making the cuts.
Okay, so your motion is to approve, and to set, to schedule the public hearings on the tax increases on the date specified, the 29th, 22nd, 29th? Okay, so you've heard the motion?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to take both days. We need them on both days. They'll do it without you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Councilmember Hutchinson?
That would be for a second.
Okay, we have a motion to take a record vote on setting the tax rate at 55.76, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
A preliminary tax rate, and scheduling those two public hearings. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sutton?
Very briefly, what Tom was mentioning about the adjustments is really predicated on part of our rules and regulations and our charter, and it has to do with Section 1707 of the Haltum City Resources Rules and Regulation that specifies that at least a 5% increase, whichever is greater, between grades, and in Section 1108, in classification of city employees. And this is driving some of the adjustments that we're trying to make in the pay scales that Human Resources is doing. And I recommend that if you'd like to know more about that, that you look at those sections and give the city a call, if Tom would be more than willing to talk with you about, or any of the council members, about what's going on here and why we're having to correct this at this time.
Okay, any further comment? Councilmember Lanford?
I just want to follow up on, comment a little bit on Kim's question. Last Saturday, I believe it was, the police chief made note that when we bring on a rookie policeman, he spends one year in training. Yet, we don't get any productivity out of that policeman for one year, and we pay for him. We pay that whole year. So, there's some, there's some immediate savings and immediate impact by not going out there and starting from scratch every so often.
I was going to say, the cost of that officer is currently estimated at $50,700.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to throw that out.
50,730.
That's a five zero, yes.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sutton?
I just also wanted to say real briefly that if we didn't do this pay scale adjustment, Tom, isn't it true that the tax rate could be left almost the same?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what's really driving this thing. I mean, everything combines to make what the tax rate is comprised of, but I think that the idea that the council wanted to write something that had been wrong is what's driving this, to be a little bit higher than what we had anticipated.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, if you'll register your vote. And the motion passes by unanimous vote to set the preliminary tax rate at the amount specified. Okay, that takes us now to item number 11, and that is the IESI rate increase. Mr. Mayor, you want to introduce this item for us, please?
Sure. Mayor and council, a couple of months ago, IESI came to the staff regarding a request to increase their rate to residential and commercial customers. We've been talking with them back and forth about the supporting data that, for this rate increase. I know you have that in front of you and on the cover sheet. We have Mr. Bob Neese and Jay Gunther here to address some of the concerns that the council may have. I think in pre-council, we didn't get to address all of those. But Bob, I was wondering if you could go ahead and come on up, if that's okay with the mayor? Bob, go ahead and restate what you were talking about earlier for the people at home, and then we'll try and get going on this dialogue.
Great, thank you. Tom, Mayor, members of the council, again, Bob Neese, area market manager, IESI, 4001 Old Denton Road, Haltum City. Before you tonight, for your consideration, you have a request for a 5.5% rate adjustment. That rate adjustment's made up of these components, which is also summarized, I hope, in your packets there. The fuel impact alone of the current fuel price of $2.27 a gallon versus last year when we came in for a rate increase, fuel prices were $1.72. That fuel price, as of October of '04, went up in over $2. So the impact on the current contract based on the current price today is 44,300. That does not take into account the fuel increases that we could not recoup. Our last rate adjustment was based on fuel price of $1.72. So, again, that is in the rears. We'll never regain that loss, but we're here tonight for that adjustment. Disposal, the impact of disposal as far as the 5.5% goes, is made up of disposal of 1.1% of the 5.5. Okay, and that total is $33,200 a year, and that is a 33 cent per yard increase at the gate that was effective in April of 2005. So again, that's still in the rears. We're still behind where we were, but we're coming to you tonight for that consideration. The third component was wages and benefits, $45,500. That consists of 1.5% of the 5.5% increase. The majority of that's made up of 17% of that is benefits. That means that, and benefits that we provide for our employees, it has actually gone up about $120 per employee per month. In addition to that, the turnover rate, we really didn't get into this in the work session, not only do we try to increase our employees on an annual basis, being the type of work it is, they need an incentive to stay with it. It's hard, it's nasty, it's dirty, it takes a lot of time and effort, and so you want to provide that incentive to those employees, an increase. But also, there's a high turnover percentage. So with that turnover percentage, which is over 6% to 7%, you probably end result is you have to hire employees at a higher rate. Okay, you'll find yourself, that cost of living goes with your existing rates, pay scale, and also with our employees. We compared our existing pay rate to all the existing competitors within the market. So overall, though, those rate, the wage and benefit factor is only for those wages generated from the operation side. That means the drivers and the helpers, no SGNA, no Bob Neese, no Jay Gunther, no Salesforce, no nothing. It's pretty, it's strictly related to the operation of the Haltum City contract, and that totals $45,500. In addition to that is truck maintenance, $36,900 a year. That's basically, is where the steel component comes in, part of it, okay, where we have to maintain floors of trucks so they don't leak, you maintain the bottoms of containers when they, when they get holes in them. The life of a container has about 10 years, okay? We've had some of these containers out seven to eight years, okay, and those have to be replaced. A new container today costs about, one eight-yard, an eight-yard container costs about $740 per container, okay? Five years ago, we could get those containers for $540. Big difference in the rate of steel, and that, that's where the steel component comes in. The rear loaders themselves, we depreciate that over 10 years. They have a pretty reliable 10-year lifespan on a rear loader. A front-load truck is eight years in our company, so we're now getting into that time where we have to start replacing those trucks. A new front loader today costs about $220,000. That's the commercial garbage truck. Back in 1995, when we bid the contract, it was, you know, $175,000. That's a component of steel. All right, the more steel on those trucks obviously drives the price up for those vehicles. Same instance in a rear loader. Today, a rear loader costs about $175,000. Five years ago, it cost, you know, $145,000. Another component of steel. So, what you have is an increase of about $159,000 of cost only related to the daily operation of the Haltum City contract. Does not include any capital cost, does not include any container replacement cost. It only includes the day-to-day operation. We hope we can get your support tonight for this increase. All of our cities within Tarrant County are going to be, if they haven't already, are going to be subject to this type of presentation proposal in front of them as well. Forest Hill has approved a 5.5% increase, and their current rate for solid waste collection comparable to the same services that Haltum City has, less an extra bulk pickup for each month, is $8.76 a month for the Forest Hill residents. And in fact, I'm going to take a few minutes and go through all of the rates that we have in Tarrant County to let you know where everybody is. Okay, City of Lake Worth is $7.10. Forest Hill is $8.76 per home. Sanson Park is $7.15 per home. Westworth Village is $10.92 a home. That is automated collection with a cart. It's a little bit different, so it's not apples to apples, but it is, it's higher. City of Colleyville is $7.94 per month per home, and that does include mandatory recycling also. They make recycling mandatory. City of Everman, which was a newly awarded contract for IESI, is $7.94. Everman? That was awarded to us back in April. It's a new...Everman? Okay, all right. And the City of Joshua is $9.75 per month per home. So as what you can see is, the rates are in comparison. I think after the increase, the Haltum City residential rate will go from $6.94 to $7.29 per home per month, in line with the existing market. And we asked tonight that you would support our rate adjustment, and I'd be glad to answer any questions and go through some of these costs in more detail if you'd like.
Tom? Tom?
You said from $694 to what?
$7.29.
Says $7.32 here on the proposed thing. But now we got him on tape, $7.29.
$7.29 it is.
$7.29 it is.
I'm teasing.
Do you have that on yours?
This is, I'm looking at the, on the chart that we got from your office. $7.32.
Is it 39 or 38?
It's a .38. .38 cent increase.
That was last year.
$7.32.
You're reading the narrative, aren't you?
Yeah. $7.32 would be the correct adjustment.
Okay. Are we settled on $7.32, which represents a, is it .38 cent increase?
It's .38 cents.
Is it 38?
That's what the...
It's .38 cents.
Okay. So it's a .38 cent increase. Okay. When we were meeting in pre-council, before, while we were involved in the workshop, Councilmember Bransom was asking questions, and I want us to just take up where we left off, and if you need to back up a little bit. And then Councilmember Reese had her light on, and then we'll proceed from there. So Councilmember Bransom, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm sure everyone's confused, starting on this end instead of the other end this week. We're gonna start rotating weeks, guys. Thank you for giving us those rates. You had a little bit of time to do some homework after we started in pre-council. I had asked him about some rates in some other cities in Tarrant County. And let's just, now, do these have no bulk pickup, no brush pickup, and twice-a-week trash pickup? Are we comparing the same services on these rates?
The cities that I mentioned are all similar, except for Forest Hill and Westworth Village.
Well, and one of them has mandatory recycling, but...
Right, it's mandatory recycling.
Which was Westworth Village.
No, mandatory recycling was City of Colleyville, and their rate is $7.94, including their recycling rate. It is mandatory.
Okay. Which brings up, well, we'll address that anyway. And I certainly empathize with your equipment replacement and your hard, nasty, dirty jobs, because we have employees in the city that also do hard, nasty, dirty jobs that would like a higher rate of pay. And we constantly seem to have equipment that needs to be replaced, and I can certainly empathize with that. And generally, we have to go to our citizens when we do something like that. What I'm struggling with is the 3% COLA, because we've not been able to give our employees a COLA or raise. And like I said, we have many employees that do jobs that are probably something that you and I wouldn't like to do on a daily basis, but, and I greatly appreciate what they do. I certainly understand the cost of benefits going up, being in the health insurance industry myself. And I definitely can empathize with gasoline, since I drive 90 miles a day round trip to work. So some of those costs I can understand. What I'm struggling with, though, is the COLA and that sort of thing. So, Mayor, after everyone has a chance to talk, I have a motion I would like to make that isn't one that normally we make. So after everybody has a chance to talk, I'd like the opportunity to jump in and do that.
Okay. It's not appropriate to make that motion right now. We have one citizen who's filled out a request to address the council on this, and then we have Councilmember Reese, and there may be other discussion before.
And can I, may I ask one more question, since you did mention mandatory recycling? In Halton City, those that recycle pay to recycle, and those that don't, don't. And that seems backwards to me. It seems like we're penalizing those that recycle and benefiting those that don't. And so can you shed some light on that for me?
Sure, sure I can. You don't really see non, it's a subscription service, okay? And the cost and efficiency from a non-mandatory program to a mandatory program is night and day. You pretty much have, in a mandatory program, you have the truck that goes house to house to house. Density is the key. Okay? The more houses you can pick up per home per hour, the less you can offer per home. Okay? And so where you have a non-mandatory subscription rate service, your densities are terrible and will drive your cost up per home. Because there is a cost, whether, there's a cost to doing recycling. There's a cost to collect it.
But don't you guys get money on the back end from that?
No. We actually, we actually have, we used to have to, we used to get charged per ton, okay, to process that material. All right? And we have now internalized that in our own operation. We take it to the Halton City transfer station. The only thing that's being taken over there now is recycling material, and we load it up in trailers, and we take it to our recycling facility in McKinney. Okay? So they get rebates on that end. Okay? And basically, what we see is now that the cost to transfer it to McKinney, probably a wash, okay?
Right. Because somebody's making money off the recycling. I mean, somebody is.
Right. Paper is a valuable commodity. Newspaper in the recycling, in the residential side. Corrugated is a decent commodity. You don't get a lot of that residentially. Glass is not a, you can't even get rid of your glass. People don't want the glass. It costs too much to recycle it. It's a hard, it's a hard one to market. Plastic is up and down. An aluminum is decent. Okay? Aluminum you do get.
So the cities that have mandatory recycling, which you said was Colleyville?
Colleyville, Westworth Village, Crowley also. And I don't have their right here, but they are mandatory recycling.
Let me make a point here. Recycling is a money-losing endeavor.
Oh, I understand. It just seems backwards.
I don't want there to be anybody thinking it's a moneymaker. But you're right in assuming that it's backwards. I mean, if you're reducing the waste stream, you should be paying less for solid waste.
Right.
And that's not the case here. And we've had very peripheral discussions about trying to shift us over to a mandatory recycling, to try and do better with that, to try and, because our recycling numbers are going down, because it is an added service.
The average customer, just for educational purposes, the average customer in recycling generates about eight pounds per home, on an average.
Per week, per month?
Per pickup. Okay? Eight pounds per pickup is what, five to eight pounds per pickup? And I may be stretching a date, okay? But the average customer in trash generates over 52 pounds a home.
A week?
A week.
I gotta start throwing more stuff out.
52 pounds per home is an average per pickup. Okay? So there's your offset with recycling, than the disposal factor. Okay? The amount, the cost of process for recycling, it's, on an average, across the state of Texas, and probably every recycler that processes recycling is probably in the area of about $35 a ton. Well, disposal, okay? For you to throw away your garbage is in the range of $16 a ton. It's cheaper to throw it away. And I, and again, I think recycling is the right way. I mean, it's good to have that program. It's good to recycle. It's good to take your, you know, and increase your landfill space. But it's not the cost-effective thing. Just because it's, the perception is that it doesn't cost and it's cheaper.
That it pays for itself.
It's not.
It doesn't do that.
It's the right thing to do, because you conserve landfill space. And that's, that's the key component for recycling.
And Tom, out of curiosity, what's our average household size in Halton City?
You mean people-wise?
I mean, he's saying 50-something pounds a week, and I'm thinking a onesie here, and there's no way I throw out 50,000, 50 pounds a week.
I know, I know my house. I know, I've got considerably more than eight pounds in recycling. I'm about to go to my third bin for recycling.
Are you talking about for trash?
Yeah. You said 50 pounds a week for trash.
52 pounds per home.
And I'm thinking, I need to start cleaning out closets or something.
Well, that's probably based on four people being in the home.
It's the average. And Halton City meets the average for households.
And that's why I was curious how many, what our average household size was, if we knew. Didn't we do some...
I don't know, there's some areas of town, you got 10 or 12 people living in the house.
That's true. That's true. That's true. Okay. I was just curious. I was in my mind.
I'll give you, so you feel good about the amount of trash that you generate?
There's others that are...
Colleyville generates a lot more trash per home than Halton City.
Right. And their recycling numbers are low.
And a lot of it is lot size and grass, grass clippings.
Oh, okay.
That's right. That's what we talked about, grass clippings. They don't want to mulch their grass, they want to bag it.
Okay.
Anything further?
No. I'm through for now.
Okay. Councilmember Reese, and then Councilmember Lanford.
Okay. You mentioned in pre-council that you maintained your containers. Are you referring to the containers on the trucks themselves? Are the so-called containers you have spread out wherever?
Yeah. There's about nine, over 900 commercial containers in Halton City. Those containers need to, whether it's a lid replacement, or if it's a side door, if it's a bottom that needs to be put back on the container. We used to replace containers. We used to just, because the cost of containers was in a price range, it didn't make sense to replace a bottom. Okay? But now, the price of steel going up like it is, we look at things to, it's more cost-effective on certain sized cans to go ahead and replace the bottom, give it a new fresh paint job, refurb the inside. And we have a contractor that does a lot of that work. And so we make these changes all the time, as far as, like in any normal business, like all of you who run businesses, you know, our operating plans change based on the most cost-effective way to do something. And so currently, right now, what I meant by maintaining containers was the containers that were out within Halton City, the commercial establishments.
Okay. Because where my concern is, and, I mean, we've got a couple of citizens that love to just email us everything. And there's a couple real valid, is when these containers get emptied, they're behind a screened-in area, they get emptied, and they're put in a parking spot or away from the screened area. We have city ordinances to say, this is what has to be done. As a result, your drivers doing that is causing problems for our business owners, which then they get mad, and they say, well, we want to go away because, I mean, we need to find a solution, you know, for that avenue. And while you're coming up, I'll just throw out my other ones, is I'm with Diane on the cost of living, you know, in the medical, because we too have had an increase in our medical premiums. But since we're not able to do everything we need to do for the city, or for the employees, I'm saying, we're eating a lot of that. You know, so I mean, I've just got, I'm like her, I've got concerns there. But you talk about 12% increase in parts and materials, you know, tires, fuel filters, brakes.
And steel. That's true, just steel. Like for the replaced bottoms.
In that, in that, what percentage do you have on property repairs, from when your drivers decide they're going to cut that turn a little bit close, and they're running up on curbs? Or running stop signs and being in a potential accident? I see one every Saturday, every Saturday.
Okay.
You know, she commented 6:45 pickups, and I watch unsafe driving, and...
You bet. This does not include risk, does not include if there's an accident, if one of our trucks hit another car. Okay? Does not include a property damage where, if somebody, if we put a rut in somebody's yard, we're responsible for that. Okay? Those, that is not, a risk is a separate category that we, that we don't penalize customers for. Risk is our own problem.
Do y'all have a number the citizens can call? Because I've called and complained, and I got zero results.
That's not acceptable. I mean, we do...
No, it's not. And...
It's a cell number.
We do have a number. It's 817-222-2221. It's on every truck.
That's on the truck.
And every container.
It's a cell number.
But I mean, these are just, just different things, and, you know, I've got neighbors that came up and said, ooh, this is coming up. I'm not going to pay this rate. I don't want to pay this rate, simply because they tear up my trashcans, they've torn up my yard.
I understand.
You know, I mean, there's just a lot.
And we'll take responsibility for that. If we, if it's something in negligence of our company, we've replaced many trashcans. I'm not the first one to tell you, do we ever break trashcans? You betcha.
Yes, you do. But at least we get to have trashcans with you all. Some communities don't allow trashcans.
And we will replace them. If we damage them, we don't, and we don't haggle about it. We send our supervisor to Home Depot, we replace the trashcan. That's not in this cost. Okay? None of that component, no other operating expenses that are, these are things that we can identify that are clearly cost factors that resulted from a changing economy, okay? And they're big items.
Okay. Then with what you're explaining, why you need this rate increase? Tell me what I'm paying for. What benefits me to give you more money to come pick up my trash?
Well, for one, it's the cheapest service that you, that a resident pays for the services that a city provides. If you didn't pick up somebody's gar, people would pay $20. In the rural area, people pay $25 a month to have their garbage taken away. It is a very valuable service, and IESI, for the most part, does an exceptional job. The things that happen here, if we haven't responded right and haven't done a good job there, we'll deal with it. And we have. And I would challenge anybody that's, that, when I've been contacted of an issue, if it hadn't been addressed, to their satisfaction. Or Jay Gunter. My name's Bob Neese.
And actually, I'd...
If you would, if you're going to speak, give us your name and your position with IESI.
Jay Gunter. I'm the district market manager for Fort Worth. My office is right here in Halton City. And Brenda calls me, I'm going to say, once every two months with an issue, which, going by roughly 146,000 homes in a month. It's a pretty good, pretty good percentage of error there. And I think I've responded every time you've done, and I jump through hoops the minute I get anything from any council member. So if you have an issue and you give it to me, Ms. Reese, I will handle it directly.
I don't use my title for things. And I just want to go on record, I mean, I am, outside of here, I'm me. I'm a mom.
And I did want to address, though, the issue with the dumpsters, because it is an issue. But we respond right to it. We have a customer service center right there in Halton City. Those men and women are steady answering the phone. They have a response time that they're held to, to make sure that the actions are closed. If a dumpster's left outside in an enclosure, it is 99% of the time, as a result to an ordinance, to where we have, the city has declared that they need to have an enclosure to put their dumpster in, and at which time Chris Rotti and the city people are excellent at providing the maps and the things that we give them, the drawing to build their enclosure. However, to save a nickel, the drawing we give them versus the enclosure built at the end do not match. And when you try to get that $225,000, $12 and 1/2-ton truck into an enclosure that barely fits, and you don't want to create the incidents that you're talking about, it becomes a customer service issue at that time. And we do pull those dumpsters out to keep from breaking something. We do call that customer right away. We send the supervisor out immediately to address those issues. We document those with city staff and do follow-up to them. At that point, though, when it's outside that enclosure, I can't write a citation. I can't, I can't make an ordinance, do what it's going to do. I can tear down the corral if I keep trying to get in there, which I don't want to do. And there are, there are issues like, we have probably one every other week, just like you're talking about. We address them, handle them, and try to keep them from any of you guys having to deal with that. I think I'm pretty successful at doing that, so, but, we are.
Anything further, Councilmember Reese?
Thank you.
Tom, did you have something you want to say at this point? Councilmember Lanford?
Thank you. One of the things that we talked about a while ago was the recycling. And we'll just point out that when we said it's not cost-effective, that's, that's when you look at things strictly as money costs. There are other costs besides money, and we all need to remember that. need to remember that. That's the weakness of always thinking in terms of money, that it doesn't always cover things. I think it was Einstein that said, not everything that counts can be counted, and not everything that can be counted counts. So, just want to throw that in. One issue that I have that I've wrestled with for a while is the rate that citizens in Alton City pay when they put their trash or bulk items in their own vehicle, trailer, or pickup, and take it down here to the transfer station. We are, the last time I checked, we were charged a one-ton minimum. That just seems excessive to me. And I'm wondering if you've got any way that you could address that, make it a more appropriate charge for that bulk transfer for an ordinary citizen to take a pickup load of bulk down to the transfer station.
Mr. Lan, I'll have to get back, I can, I need to look at that. I don't see why we would charge a one-ton minimum on a pickup truck, and I need to get back to that. I would glad to.
The fellows down there and I had a discussion about that previously.
Okay.
And Bob, this is the same thing we talked about about two, three months ago.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
And the, one other thing, I don't know how large your company is, and I don't know, there may be some limits on where fuel hedging makes sense in terms of scale. But I was just going to ask if you've looked at that, at hedging your fuel, so that the folks whom you serve can benefit from that cost savings.
Yeah, we have hedged about four years ago. And again, I can't speak on all the details that's done at a higher level than me, but we have not hedged since. And I think in some extent, they don't, some of the hedging is not available at this point in time, and it has to do with validity of the market. So, we have done in the past, and I know that we explore it when it's available, all right? And to that, I can't speak anymore on it. But it is something that we have done in the past.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything further, Councilmember Lanford?
I'm glad you reminded me that. There is one other thing. And I know, I don't mean to disagree with the observations of my fellow councilpersons in terms of your seeking a 3% cost of living and a 17% increase in your benefits. That, I think you said that was like 1, 1 1/2% of the total-
It's actually 1.5% of the total request.
Right, okay. My recollection is, is that we have, in fact, while we have not called it a cost of living, because it's not, we have certainly entertained the notion of giving our employees a raise, if you will, and so that they can take home more money. That's, and I think it's not unreasonable, just from my perspective, not unreasonable for a 3% cost of living to be included in there. So I just wanted to say that.
Councilmember Sutton, and then Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification here. Whenever you were talking, Bob, you talked about containers and steel for the truck maintenance 36900. And what we got here said that it was a 12% increase in parts and materials, example, tires, fuel filters, brakes, et cetera. And it seems like you didn't talk about that either in pre-council or here, so I was kind of wanting to see if this was a discrepancy or what.
It's not a discrepancy. It came up when we got kind of cut off when the steel component came in. And, you know, the average cost to maintain a truck has gone up about $250 in actuality per route, okay, and per month, okay? And we use that based on the number of routes and back into it that way. So, there's no discrepancy. That is an actual number based on those routes that run in Alton City, okay?
Okay, well, then the second question is, ISI doesn't own any landfills. They contract with the landfills. Is that correct, or am I wrong in that understanding?
Incorrect, we do. We own the Fort Worth CND Type 4 landfill in South Fort Worth, which is off of Dick Price Road. And we also own the ISI Weatherford landfill, which we acquired from the city of Weatherford. And we also are permitting a landfill in Jack County, okay, which is, it's actually, it's the northern corner of Wise, southern corner of Jack County. We currently, okay, with the disposal, the disposal increase, basically that volume is going to Waste Management's landfill in Westside. It's more cost efficient as an operator, and it's more cost effective in this case, okay, to utilize that facility than drive the extra miles to our own landfill. It's cheaper for us to do it there. So you're getting the benefit, we're providing you the cheapest benefit in that area, so.
What would be the rate increase if you had to drive the trucks to your own landfills instead of running it to?
Yeah, our rate at our landfill went up 50 cents, okay, at the Weatherford landfill. This landfill rate adjustment was only 33 cents in terms of our cost to us.
I see.
Okay, so it's cheaper for us to use the Waste Management site at this time.
Okay.
In the future, obviously, Westside is an issue. It's going to be closing. Get back to your recycling thing. That's a good thing of recycling, it increases your landfill space, okay, which is the ultimate, you want to conserve that landfill space, it's very important, very valuable, and you want to maintain that. So, that landfill, we could close anywhere from 24 months to 48 months. We don't really know. Waste Management's the ones who actually know that, but we just hear that it could be closed as early as next October.
I see.
So, at that time, obviously, it's more cost efficient for us to go to our own landfill in Weatherford.
Right. Are you actively pursuing other landfill sites to mitigate that?
Yes. The Jack County landfill is one that would be, is in the process of being permitted right now. We're in the, we've already submitted an application to the TCEQ. It's been approved administratively. It's being reviewed now technically, and we should hopefully have approval with that site within 18 months.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Councilmember Lanford's statements on the 3% cost of living and what we're doing for our employees, and get Mr. Muir to help me out here. We are sliding the scale or sliding the pay for our employees where we're not calling it a COLA, but we're actually putting more money in their pocket. We are in the process of what we can do with what we have, correct?
If I understand what you're asking, we are shifting the pay plans, and some employees will get money from it. Specifically, the sworn personnel will get, have some significant movement in their pay plan, and their pay, their pay plan is being adjusted for market and to adjust for some of the non-compliance issues that we've got. As far as the non-sworn, there are some, there is movement in that, but as far as money in their pockets, there's some, but not as much as with the sworn.
Right. So with the tax rate that we're implying or wishing to go to, we're doing what we can do with that. We would all like to do more COLA if we had the revenue to do it.
Correct. There is no COLA in there, but mainly because of the market adjustment that they're getting.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay, we have one citizen who has asked to address the council, RD Millholland, if you will come forward at this time, and then I have a comment to make. And then, if the council is ready, we'll be prepared to take action on this request. Mr. Millholland?
Thank you, Mayor. RD Millholland, 3711 Gene Lane. I'm very glad to hear from my city council some really, what I consider progressive questioning on this issue. You've asked a lot of things that I would have asked if I'd had a chance first. So, thank you. Saved me some time up here. I tried to do a little homework on this a while back, and I ran into a big problem, Mr. Neese. According to the contract that ISI has with Colton City, there's a required report, monthly report, I believe, that's to be submitted, that is supposed to provide a certain amount of detail on quantities of refuse that's picked up, and on recycling also. And I've not been able to find, I think, in over a four-year period, I think I found two of those reports. They're not being delivered here.
Okay, if we, if we could-
I'm sorry, I broke the rules tonight.
No, no, please, no. You can address him, you're fine. If, Bob, if you could be prepared in a moment to follow up and answer this question, do you have any more questions or comments or observations you wish to make before Mr. Neese comes back to the podium?
Yes, sir. I would ask the council to take under consideration, when the, I don't know, at whatever time is appropriate, to consider mandatory recycling in the city. You know, that is the long-term solution. Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Millholland, and Mr. Neese, if you would, please.
See better. As far as the recycling, there are reports required. Recycling report is done quarterly, and at times, obviously, Fran will call or remind us that the report is due or needs to be turned in, but it is turned in quarterly. As far as the solid waste information, I'm going to have to go back and check that, and make sure that we supply the information that we, that needs to be provided to the city. So I will definitely check into that as well, so. And Fran, is there any discrepancies with the recycling at this time, right now?
We don't get regular reports. We had until very recently. The last one I got, Jay actually brought me to one of our board meetings.
Okay. Reporting is important information. The valid point is that if it's to be provided, we need to provide it timely. We make sure we do that. It's got good information in it as far as, it'll tell you how many pounds per home you'd average and that kind of thing, which is helpful when you want to make a decision on recycling of that nature. So, we definitely appreciate the input, and we'll make sure that we rectify anything.
Yeah, we had that conversation about that report last year, right about this time, when you came for your last rate increase.
Right, and-
And it picked up, I think you got a couple not too long after that, and one one for the right city or something like that.
Do you know, I was just visiting, he's under interpretation, it's every quarter, but if it's more than that, it needs to be-
So, anyway, yeah, that's-
Yes, take the cackling. We do do, we do the recycling report every quarter. I was late a few times getting them to Fran, and one time I did mix up Collivale's stuff with you guys' stuff, which she was very quick to tell me was wrong, because their participation rate is much, much less than y'all's, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I do have a question that may need response from you. One of the things I hear from citizens more than anything else is the lack of enthusiasm on the part of your drivers and the people that pick up the trash to actually get all the trash all the time, and they leave some behind. And they do it at my house, and I have to go out periodically and pick up my own trash that they miss the back of the truck with. Not a big deal, but it just happens enough that that is kind of a problem. And I know y'all are concerned with quality control, and we want to keep Alton City beautiful. And sometime, my trash can doesn't get back up in the yard. It's laying out in the street, it's laying on the curb. Not often, but enough for me to notice and for other citizens to, I don't know if they ever get with y'all about the guys through the trash can, and it missed the yard, and it's rolling down the curb.
We don't know unless they call, because drivers don't, you know, so when they call, obviously, it's a priority. We want quality control, we want the city to look nice and neat behind it. Supervisor's job is to do kind of quality control in itself, go behind the routes as much as they can and make sure that containers are set up right. And so we have those procedures in place that supervisors need to keep an extra eye open and-
Okay, one other question I have, and it's probably in the documentation, and I don't have my documentation here, but for the benefit of our citizens who might be watching or are interested in this, you're requesting a 38 cent increase for the residential. What about for somebody who has one of the big dumpsters, what kind of increase, how does that translate into what kind of increase a commercial customer who has a single dumpster?
It's the same percentage for commercial, and I think an eight-yard once a week would be, I want to say $5, around $5 a month.
Increase over what they're currently paying. Tom, you may have those numbers.
It's $6.05.
$6.05 on a once a month?
On one time a week, pick up for an eight-yarder.
Okay.
That's the largest size container.
Councilmember Clark, and then I'm going to call for a motion after you're finished.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. When I first moved in my home, I was having trouble with the trash cans and a little bit of trash. And if you take a gallon Ziploc bag, put two scoops of ice in it and two Coca-Colas, a lot of that problem takes care of itself, sir. That's about once a month, once every two months.
Okay. Ray, send that request on around. I know you got here late, and normally, we say if you want to speak on any item, get one of those filled out, and you had it when you come in, so, a little flexibility tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry I was late. I'll try not to be late in the future. I did have a question regarding the transfer station rates. You covered the commercial rates. I didn't know if this rate increase would also apply to the transfer station down there. Mr. Neese said something to the effect of it's used for recycling now. I know we spent a great deal of time up here visiting about the transfer station when it came in, and probably now, what, three years later, one of their primary customers. I would like to know about the one-ton cutoff and the one-ton jump. You know, they have a scale, but it jumps from one ton to two. If you go over one ton, they'll charge you for two tons. So that's something that I'd like to consider, because that is in effect. If you go in there with, you know, 2,200 pounds, you're paying 90% too much for the second one. That's one thing that would help. Also, I'm interested in making sure that the transfer station is advertised to our citizens, that we, people know that's there, that it is for the convenience and recycling and the bulk trash, because frankly, you know, we have a lot of old trees here, and when they fall over on my shed, I need to take care of it. So, I don't like that in my yard, and you don't like it on the curb, so. The transfer station is a joint revenue sharing project between the city and the company. I would like to know how many millions we're making out of that one? I know what the answer is already, but you might want to share that with us. And, anyway, that was my concern. I want to know if those rates were going up as well, if we could look at the rate jump, the ton jump idea, and can we make it more cost effective? I want you guys to make a profit down there, because we're going to make a profit. I'd like to know how we're going to do that and encourage better use of the facility down there. You know, frankly, when we spoke about it, you get ready to build it, we envisioned lines of cars and trucks all the way down the freeway. Let me tell you, when I pull up there, I'm the only car, okay? That's not making us any money, and it's not getting our city clean, so.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Eklund. Do you want to respond to any of the comments he made? And one I thought of while you were walking up there that may have been what he asked. I'm always on the next item, and I'm not always plugged in to what's happening right now. I'm thinking about where we're going from here. Does this have any impact on increasing any rate at the transfer station?
This is no impact at all on the transfer station. The one-ton, minimum one-ton is something that I'm going to look at. There's rates set up in the existing contract for Alton City residents for certain loads, and it's, usually it's a flat rate for a pickup truck, and it's, because a scale can't typically pick up the weight of a pickup truck if it's so small of a weight, doesn't even pick it up. So, flat rates are set in place for those. So I'm going to get back with council on that. There is no rate increase at the transfer station. There is no one-ton minimum. There is flat rates, which I'll look at and see what they come out per ton, okay, on average, and we'll look at those and make some decisions based on where we're at on those. But as far as profit sharing goes and all that, we have provided, Jay has provided information to the recycling committee also. There is no profit at the transfer station. It's a negative operation. It is a, you know, we do run all the recycling for Alton City that we collect, also run all the recycling through for Collivale. Alls we do is load it in transfer trailers and haul it out. So it's kind of like a, just a transfer point for that.
Tom, did you have something before Bill?
Yeah, it's on the topic he's talking about, if you don't mind. Where do your trucks go now? I mean, if they don't come to our transfer station, they take it somewhere to another transfer station, or do they go hauling it straight to the landfill?
Recycling or trash?
Trash.
Trash goes to Waste Management, Westside landfill.
Goes, they go straight to the landfill, they're not going to a transfer station?
Not going to Alton City transfer station. Only trucks that are using that are, we have our own industrial accounts that have corrugated. We bring corrugated through there, and we bring our residential recycling through there. And if we have a clean load of our front-load recycling, we bring it through there.
And going to the Westside landfill, it's a business decision that you've made because it's more cost effective for you to haul your, to have your loaders, rear loaders, front loaders going out to the Westside instead of going to the transfer station, dumping it on the floor, having it scooped up or pushed off into another truck, and then having it hauled off to, I guess, the Westside landfill?
Actually, if we transferred, it would go to the Weatherford landfill.
Okay. But anyway, going to another landfill, that is more costly.
With Westside still open, it's not the best business decision to take to another landfill. It is the cheapest accessible landfill for the city of Alton City to utilize through ISI is Westside landfill for us.
I understand.
Councilmember Lanford, and then when he's through, I'll call for the motion.
Well, I just wanted to encourage Mr. Neese to, when you're looking at those flat rates, to remember, because I was on the planning and zoning when this thing came through and was approved, and I remember part of the understanding that I had, and I think the rest of the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time had the same understanding, was that we would, Alton City residents would receive a reduced rate at the transfer station, and I would like for you to consider setting that at such a rate that it would encourage use as opposed to discourage use there. Thank you.
One thing we'll commit to tonight is evaluating that and also participate in a mail-out advertising the transfer station for residents of Alton City tonight. We'll work with Fran on that and advertise it once again.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we've discussed this for 50 minutes. I'm ready by the clock. So I'm ready for a motion at this time. Councilmember Branson, you have your light on.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank you gentlemen for showing up tonight and answering a lot of my questions. And I just, I wanted to let you know that I still struggle with, although I empathize and I understand parts of this, I still struggle with parts of it. So rather than making a motion to den- So rather than making a motion to deny it, I would like to make a motion to negotiate on this and have you all get with Mr. Mura and see if you can come back with, um, some other numbers or figures that might be more agreeable.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to, uh, send this back for renegotiation, and it has to do primarily with that cola?
Well, now, I, if you want me to help negotiate, I'll be more than happy to show up, but I really don't think you want me there. Um, just, I, I would, I'll leave it up to them to decide that, I mean, I think they've heard what the council said, I think they've heard various issues that several of us have mentioned.
Okay.
I think these guys are smart enough that they know where we're coming from, and, and Tom is too, and so I'd like to send it back to them and see what they can bring back. But when they bring it back, and I don't know if this should be in the motion, I would like to see a report that compares these services so that we can, I mean, I wrote, wrote it down, I don't know if I can read it tomorrow, but I can read it tonight, uh, so we can see the similar services and the costs. And also, what would be helpful to know is when they negotiated those costs.
So the motion is to, uh, send this back, uh, for renegotiation, bring it back, I suppose, at the next council meeting?
Um, a month.
Okay, so nothing about the next council meeting, just renegotiate. Councilmember Reese?
That was for a second.
Have a motion and a second to send this back for renegotiation. Uh, do we have any discussion on this motion? Okay, there being none, if you'll register your vote at this time, I will display it. And, uh, do you have, okay, the vote, uh, the motion passes four to three. Councilmember Landford, Clark, and Hutchison voting, uh, against the motion. Okay, so the motion passes, uh, we move now to the Visiter Citizens Forum. This time is set aside for any person having a, uh, having business before the city that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. Uh, all comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than to an individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Uh, those individuals who have submitted a speaker request card are granted a six-minute time limit, and those who wish to address the council who have not filled out one of these will be extended a, a three-minute time period. Counsel cannot, uh, discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken since this was not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. Our first speaker is Jean Snow. Uh, Mr. Snow, you've listed here that you wish to speak on the subject of oil and gas leasing. Uh, that was an item that we had earlier just for a report on, and you and I had a discussion, uh, before we, uh, before the council meeting started, at which you asked, would you be able to ask questions and us respond, uh, here tonight? Uh, that is correct, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I may well have thought we were talking about the item listed earlier on the agenda.
You never asked, though, if you needed any public questions or comments that I heard.
But I looked directly at you when we got to that, uh, when I got to that point, and you didn't indicate that was so, but, uh, for, what happened to the attorney when?
Anyway, my name's Jean Snow, fifty-seven nineteen Airport Freeway.
Okay, I'm not sure in this venue that we'll be able to respond to, uh, we, this item is on the agenda, uh, have a question, a legal question.
Yes, sir.
I think I may have given Mr. Snow wrong information. He and I were talking before the council meeting started about the oil and gas leasing. He, uh, asked if he would be able to address the council, uh, on this, and we be able to answer back and forth if he had specific questions. I told him yes, that was based on the appearance of this item earlier on the agenda. He has a request now that, uh, is before us under the speakers and visitors forum, and, uh, we have a, I have a dilemma here. Are we able to respond to him, uh, and any question he might have about oil and gas leasing under this section?
May I say something?
Not until the attorney speaks, and then...
Okay. He didn't mention any public comments at that time, and I wouldn't have stood up.
I understand, and, and Mayor, it, it's just a question of posting, so everybody knows that the issue is we, we've got to be careful about the city council taking on a discussion on a matter that's not properly posted, because the citizens have a right to know what the council is going to discuss and what they're going to take action on. Uh, so the question is, the way this is posted, it's posted as a presentation, update on gas drilling on city-owned property, and, um, there's, there's nothing in that posting that specifically indicates that there's going to be anything more than a comment from the city manager on where we are with this. Um, i- it's just a matter of interpretation of whether or not, um, the council would normally invite citizens' discussion under the presentation section. I've not seen that done before, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if in the past we've allowed citizens to speak on, on the presentation section, then I think it would be appropriate to allow Mr. Snow to, I, I should say, it'd be appropriate to reopen that and allow him to speak on it, if that's been our process in the past, but the way this is posted, uh, I, I don't get the impression that it was intended that there was going to be a discussion back and forth between citizens and council.
I have, uh, no idea what the intent was when it was posted. I had just assumed that if a citizen wanted to speak on any item that was posted on the agenda, uh, they, they would be able to at the time that agenda was, uh, item, or that, that matter was under discussion.
And, and Mayor, you have that prerogative? If, if you would like to, um, allow citizens to talk about the gas drilling update and, and, uh, ask questions on that, then we can give factual responses on that.
Okay, we can give factual responses.
That's correct.
Are we still under the open meetings, uh, limitations if I were to do that?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Yes, you are.
So that limits somewhat, Mr. Snow, and I'm going to let either the city manager or the attorney answer, if you do have questions, specific questions, one of them will have to answer rather than me or any member of the council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Tom, uh, one, just one second before, before you go. Did you have anything you needed to say? Okay, after the attorney had said what he did, you said you had something you wanted to ask, or are you ready to go ahead with your presentation?
Before he made his comment, I was hoping that I would be able to say that I did not hear if it was said, the opportunity to speak one was brought up, but then it was explained that that was not the intent, to have comments at that time, and now you've opened it up for a few minutes, and I do appreciate it.
Okay, and that is my confusion, it's not yours, it's not Mr. Mura's, it's not the attorney. It, it was my failure to, to communicate adequately with you when we discussed that earlier, so having said that, uh, you have six minutes.
Okay, not fifty minutes left? No, okay.
Six minutes.
All right. First of all, I'd like to say that, uh, my understanding is we've hired an oil and gas attorney maybe to help us with some of our decisions?
I'm in the process of that.
Okay, we don't have his name yet?
No.
Okay, that's a really good idea. You go to chiropractor for your neck or whatever, you know, especially it's just what we do need. No reflection on Mr. Wayne, he may already know the answers, but it's good to have that. Uh, next, you mentioned there will only be one property offered for bid, Mr. Mura.
To drill.
To drill, all right? There are many, many properties listed with the tax authority that Alton City owns, and probably some of them, maybe that didn't get listed, but why and when are they going to be listed?
Um, in my estimation, the only property that I'm referencing is the only one that's going to be available for the drilling, as far as what the city's purposes are to be drilling on.
Yes, sir, all right. Someone mentioned here, though, I, I think it was the mayor, that if we don't lease and someone drills next to it and we don't have a lease sign, they'll get our gas and we didn't get our money.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the citizens need to know that.
The leasing of the mineral rights will be have, will be taken care of on, under a separate process. I'm only talking about the drilling on the property right now, not leasing.
Will that be a bidding process, sir?
It'll have to be by law, it'll have to be.
By law, it'll have to be, that's good. I'd like to say something that might help you. BISD has many, many properties, and they listed them all at one time, and we all bid on all of them at once, saved having to go through this whole cycle every time for every small property. Maybe the city, the council could consider listing all the properties, get a bid on it, then a guy can plan what he's going to do, and if he's leased a property, he can put it in the unit and the city can realize the money from it. All right, uh, let's see. You've got to lease the land to get the money. In other words, if it sits out there, the city owns it, someone drills next to you, whatever, within six hundred, three hundred and thirty feet by, by our rules, horizontal, under the ground, the gas has gone and we didn't get any money. That's why we really do need to list all the properties, lease them all at once, because somebody may not want to lease that little half acre tract out there, but maybe if we can lease them all at once, we'll get it. All right?
I, I understand that, the, and I'll have to look into that. The advice that I got this past week was to do it separately, but I'll have to look into that.
Okay.
As far as lumping it all together, because I'm trying to, you know, lumping, you know, having one bid for drilling or one bid for just leasing, having them separate was the advice I was given.
Okay, is it already six minutes up or something?
No, we're responding here.
No, he's, no, he's looking at me like he's nervous.
Uh, if we could, timeout for just a second.
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney?
We're, we're getting into, to a debate here, and, and what I intended on this agenda item, Mayor, was if Mr. Snow wanted, wanted to ask questions, address certain issues, or have the, the city manager look at certain issues, he can do that, but I, I don't think the way this is posted, it's an open forum for people to ask questions back and forth about what are, what we plan to do, et cetera, in, in that regard, but, uh, he has the right to ta-talk on the subject, um, with the permission that you've given him, uh, and I, I think that's what we need to limit it to.
Okay, having said that, uh, please proceed, Mr. Snow.
Will there ever be a time that the citizens will be able to have a one-on-one, open discussion with the powers that be that lease the Alton City gas and minerals to get what they consider satisfactory answers for the good of the city and the citizens? Will that time ever come up?
Is that posted next time on the calendar, on the agenda?
Um, the, the item, uh, the item I intended to bring back to the next council meeting was seeking permission to bid out the, uh, the drilling on the property. Um, what, uh, what Mr. Snow was asking, or at least what I'm understanding him to ask, is that you want the citizens to be able to ask questions of the council about drilling or leasing on city-owned land. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, kind of put on one side. If you don't lease them, we'd like to know why you didn't.
That's fair.
Or when are you going to do it? That's all.
Yeah.
If that is posted as an item on the next agenda, that, could, could that be discussed?
I think if the council wants, wants that on there as a posted item, they can get with the city manager and ask him to post it.
Did you say there would be an item on the agenda next time?
That's my goal, is to, is to have that, that property on there to drill now. Depending on the advice I get from, you know, the attorneys, if I'm, if I'm adding a bunch of other properties, I'm not going to make that deadline in two weeks, but we'll, uh, we'll look into it and see what we can do, but I'll take it under the advice of council on how we proceed next.
Mr. Snow?
That's about it. I seem like I'm a troublemaker, and I don't intend to be. I just like to have some good old black and white bottom line. I'm a black and white person, there's not much gray when I leave, you know, where I stood. I would love for it to be that way here, and I'd sure like to lease the properties. I don't want to lease them, I like to see them out for bid, for lease. I don't want them, I want to vie for them, but I want them out there, and we're just, don't seem to get motivated, and the EDC has some properties too. But anyway, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Uh, our next speaker, uh, is Mr. Bill Journay, and he handed this yellow sheet in after he, after the meeting started, so there's a three-minute limit. And if you will, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Journay, forty-five, twenty-nine, Nadine. I, uh, with the meeting earlier, I didn't know that, uh, time was elapsing that much. I didn't see any cards given in. Okay. The world will bow to those who hold principle above policy, truth above diplomacy, and right above consistency. It should be no mystery why our cities can get only three percent to twelve percent of registered voters stuck to the polls when we simply select a lesser of two evils, or those who will ponder to, pander to business lobbyists and the birds of their own feather. Indeed, commerce, insurance, and city coalitions have depleted the will of the people to the point that oftentimes eighty percent of those who do vote are directly or indirectly tied to government or their controlled environments. Government has now, I believe, outgrown the people it serves. The purpose of the shepherd, of course, is to convince the sheep that his interests and theirs are the same. For example, there is no shortage in labor, never was. Citizens are losing their jobs, homes, savings, retirements, even healthcare, simply because business and commerce refuses to pay the citizens a living wage. An illegal slave trade is flushing our nation like a cheap toilet. Global economy, you say? I don't remember voting for this. The American worker is being bushwhacked, pun intended. Business and government speaks to us with forked tongue. Cheaper labor on one side, voting us, vote, voting us at the top of higher wages on the other side. This will stretch the middle class out of existence. This creates distance rather than balance between labor and commerce. Insects sting because of malice, not because they want, uh, of malice, but because they want to live. Our leaders are no different. They simply desire our blood, not our pain. You've passed a no insurance, no car law that does absolutely nothing to keep us safe or return our streets to, back to roads, and roads back to civility. It does nothing to enforce our existing traffic laws. It does nothing to take insurance, to make insurance, our government that sponsors this, uh, this imagination more affordable or more honest.
Mr. Journay, you have thirty seconds left, please.
It does convince us that, like other cities around us, you want, you want in the used car business to this pandering, to other lobbyists, the wrecker services. This is honest government? Not. You want to pass the school bond issue to have them... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Journay. Uh, do we have anyone else, uh, in the audience who wishes to address the council who hadn't turned in one of the, uh, request cards? Yes, Ms. Conley? If you will, give us your name and address for the record, and before you start speaking, if you'll let us know on what subject you, you wish to speak, please.
Patricia Conley, thirty-nine, thirteen, Kirby Street, Alton City, Texas. Um, the subjects of that, I mean, there's many of them tonight, there's been a lot of things, different things going on, and we don't, we're not able to address them as they come. Like on, on our, our waste management thing that you did, he gave us, uh, four or five different places that were not Tarrant County, and he had them up to nine dollars and something. He said Joshua, Joshua has seven thousand, seven thousand, six hundred and some people in it. We have a lot more than that, I think, and, uh, and if you want to tell, I want to tell you one thing, you better tell your churches that they're not going to make any money on all this recycling they're doing, because they, they can't make no money on recycling. I mean, somebody's got to be making it somewhere, because all of our churches keep telling us, bling, bring your papers, bring your stuff, so we can recycle and so we can get more money for our churches and stuff. And if he's not making money on that, I don't know who the world is, and I, we want to be recycling a lot of stuff, and we need to recycle a lot of stuff, and no, I won't go down there and pay them to get my money that, that they do it. I turn my cans in, I have to go all the way over to someplace and on the other side of Fort Worth to turn my cans in. Okay, I'd like to do plastic and other things, I had, I don't have no idea where I could turn them in to make a little bit of money on them. It's no way that you're going to have your landfills better supplied with all the junk and stuff that you're putting in it that you could be reusing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Uh, anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Okay, uh, we'll move then to item number twelve, which is boards and commissions. Do we have any resignations, uh, to be brought forth, uh, at this time? There being none, uh, do we have appointments or reappointments? Uh, Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reappoint, uh, a member to the Sexually Oriented Board of Appeals, uh, named Jim Boland. He was my appointment before. He's got, I'm sorry. Uh, he was on there before, and, uh, I'd like to reappoint him.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, a recommendation of the appointment of Mr. Jim Boland to the Sexually Oriented Business Review... to the Sexually Oriented Business Review Committee. If you will, register your vote for, regarding your desire to ratify. And that passes by unanimous vote. Do we have other appointments? Okay, there being none, uh, everyone is present tonight and our attorney tells us we have nothing to discuss, uh, in closed session. That being the case, uh, all items of the agenda having been addressed, we stand adjourned.